Good morning. I'm going to call to order this work session of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's August 21st. We'll begin with our statement, and then I'll talk about why we're here today.
Good morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. This is a work session, so we will not be taking any public comment, and we have one purpose for being here today, and I appreciate you all being in attendance. Note for the record that all three commissioners are present here in the NatU Hill Room. This meeting is an opportunity for us to go on the record to request the council to pass the statutorily allowable amount of .2 percent and to bond for $200 million for the justice project. So there are two important issues to note, and I would even preface this by saying that we do need a jail. We received another letter from a community group, New Leaf New Life, and they're asking us to repair the current facility. The current facility is not repairable. We do need to ensure that we have first a jail that is appropriately sized for the future, and we also need to ensure that we co-locate the justice services and offices with the new jail facility. And these two things cannot be done, we believe, without the imposition of the statutorily allowed .2 percent and the bond of $200 million. As commissioners, we are responsible for building, constructing, maintaining county buildings, among many other things that we do. If the tax is not imposed at the statutorily allowable amount, we risk undersizing the jail or not co-locating or potentially only partially co-locating judicial services. And there is a huge safety issue involved for our Sheriff's Department and jail staff. There's also a huge amount of inefficiencies involved if we are asking our staff to make multiple trips to a facility every day. So we are deferring this and have based this request on professionals who serve us in our community, and we have Presiding Judge DeKoff here, and we also have members of the Sheriff's Department here to talk to us about it, and we wanted to provide both of you departments with the opportunity to offer your insight at this critical juncture. So, and I'll note for the record that Judge Crothie is also here. We have Corey Grass, who's the transition leader, and we have our jail commander here, and I don't know who else wishes to speak as well from the Sheriff's Department side, but I would invite you to come up and offer your insight and your commentary. Thank you. Commander Gibbons?
Hello. Good morning, everybody. I think first what we want to do is talk about the issues that we face without co-locating from the very beginning. I think that's what I want to briefly touch on specifically, the tactics and costs associated. We do a great deal of preparation on a daily basis to ensure that we get the residents of the jail together, properly secured, and then move them safely through the building that we're in now to ensure the safety and security of the courts and the court staff. There's a great deal of effort that goes into that, which has involved numerous meetings with the Board of Judges and talking about how we're going to move people through the facility. And if you don't have that, you can't ensure the safety of everybody, even the public as they come into the courtrooms. The issues that we face, and I'm going to talk briefly about the tactics. It takes X amount of officers, a certain amount of time each day that we have to allocate to those officers to prepare the inmates even for movement in the facility. If we were not to co-locate, you would need officers for the preparation of the inmates in the facility, you would need officers for the receiving of the inmates in a new facility, and then you would need officers for the transport of those inmates to the new facility. The cost associated with just staffing is actually staggering. I come from an area where we have to transport people off-site for courts and court services, and it's not only is it not completely safe, but it's not cost-effective. With that, as we currently stand now, we would need at least two to three transport vehicles to house that many inmates to move from facility to facility. With that being said, the upkeep of vehicles, as you guys well know, is one of our biggest costs budget-wise. But, and I'll go even more in depth, the training required to keep these officers as special deputies, help them understand transports and escorts, safety-wise, safety routes, what happens if this route is compromised, we have to move to another route. There is so much involved that the general public doesn't see because we have to take care of those things and work in close conjunction with the judges and the bailiffs and our staff. Just bottom line, it is so cost ineffective that I personally and the sheriff as well, we're a little surprised that we're talking about not co-locating. And Mr. Grass can speak to the financial aspect a little bit more in terms of what we're looking at for the new facility. But I will tell you, as the jail commander and speaking to chief deputy and the sheriff who couldn't be here today, we wanted to make a strong stance that without this, I don't know how we're going to be able to fund it as a county. I would tell you, as an instructor for the state of Indiana, the time it takes to train people, let alone retain those people that you trained, this becomes a completely different matter without co-location.
Good morning. Thanks for having us. And just kind of building on what Commander Gibbons was saying, there's also a huge issue with transporting inmates with liability or safety issues. Just recently, the State Department of Corrections had a wreck up in the Greencastle area, Putnamville area, where a staff van was transporting inmates and had some severe injuries to both inmates and staff, some pretty bad things, just by moving inmates, and traffic accidents happened. There's going to be issues with that. And I think I've mentioned to you guys previously, one of my huge concerns is no matter whether we're a mile away from the Justice Center or 10 miles away, there's only so many routes our people can take to get there. The bad part of that is when it comes to staff safety or inmate safety, they know they're going to court that day. A lot of times, like the state or federal level, we can kind of obfuscate that and hide when they're going to be moved, so that way we get them to the next place safely, and then they tell their families and friends they have at the new place. They know they're going to court here, they know when their court date is, the family knows when they're being moved, their friends, their co-defendants. So there will be huge issues with safety, no matter how many routes we can try to mix up, we're going to end up in the same place every time, and they know what day that's going to be. That's a huge concern. And not really related to the co-location per se, but I think I've mentioned to people privately and separately, but also in public, changed the gears on you a bit, but if we were to go with a 400-bed facility, we're going to be right back where we start right now. My belief, and my staff has shown you the PowerPoint presentation, the numbers over the years, even with the drastic measures we've taken to try and keep our numbers down, if we build a 400-bed facility, my professional opinion is we are right back where we are right now with no separation, no classification, no rehabilitation. We're limiting what we can do, we're just going to have a brand-new fancy facility that costs a lot more money, right back where we sit right now if we would go with anywhere near 400 beds. So, and I think the numbers show that over the years where we've been. We have huge concerns about the number of beds sticking to the 500 range, and also co-location is critical for us for safety and liability cost, as Commander Gibbons mentioned also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Do either of my colleagues have questions for?
I wonder if Commander Gibbons or Mr. Grass can speak to this. I don't remember the number that we heard during our training for this. What does it cost over five years to staff even just two or three extra people? I mean, and that's an ongoing cost, right?
Yeah, so I think what you're asking is for a staff post, when we're designing a facility, a jail, what we tell clients is over the anticipated life expectancy of a jail, we have to pick a number, so we say 30 years. One additional staff post is about a $5 million decision over the life expectancy of a jail with the understanding that it's a 24/7 post. So it's three officers, and really with the shift relief factor, we're usually like 4.5 to 5 staff per post.
And that is, by the way, Scott Carnegie from DLZ. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
No, I think that that's important to talk about because this is an ongoing cost then, and it's not just a safety issue, but it's something that the county would have to fund.
And the same thing with vehicles, gasoline, wear and tear on the vehicles, I mean, it just all adds into the whole process.
Do you have comments or questions at this point? No? Okay. All right. Great. Yes?
I'd just like to ask Kyle a question because when he was talking and brought this up is, right now, we're fully staffed in our jail, and I think that's a lot to do with the current administration, but I can't go too far back in time to know when we were really struggling getting people to work in the facility. I guess, how would a non-fully staff function with this additional burden on your?
It wouldn't. It would actually put a larger burden on the people that are qualified to do that. Like, for instance, before our arrival, we did not have a dedicated transport team, something we had just created with the help of the council and the commissioners. These are people who have a working knowledge of various situations that we can deploy in an effective manner that's safe for everybody. When you don't have people doing these jobs routinely, you have people step in that sometimes don't have the knowledge that they need or should have, and this goes for any employment, any position. If you don't have people that are knowledgeable, that have to step in, you open yourself up for liability. So we get shorthanded, we put the burden on the people that do have the training, and it's difficult to retain people who feel like they're overworked, which would further set us back in the safety and security. We would almost, I'm not going to say it would be impossible to ensure that, but it'd be incredibly difficult, and it would cost a large amount of money in overtime dollars to ensure that we were still moving safely.
Thank you. Okay. So if you, okay, please.
I'm sorry, I thought of one more thing. I've mentioned this in the past, but it slipped my mind today. Operationally again, and I noticed this when I got hired in January, I started getting all the jail emails, and there's a lot of emails from the Correctional Center every single day, a lot. But they'll get, and Captain Gibbons can correct me if I'm wrong in the timing, but they'll get an email sometimes that day saying, hey, we need these following inmates up in these courtrooms at 1:30 today. And I think they start the process of getting them ready, you know, for hours ahead, and then it happens because the way the system is set up, it's everywhere, it's not just here, there'll be another email at 11:30 or 12 saying, oh, we need these three other people also at 1:30.
Right.
So if we're five miles away and that van has left with, you know, I'm just going to make a hypothetical, two staff members with five inmates heading in that direction, and also we need three more to go now a couple hours later while those guys are gone, we need a second van now, we need at least additional staff to get them there, and it just, it becomes very cumbersome and impractical.
Right. Okay. Good. Thank you. Commander Gibbons?
I have one more thing. If you give Corey Grass an opportunity to speak, he will.
And you never will, right? Okay. Please, please stay here in case we have further questions or commentary. Thank you so much. We appreciate you both. Judge DeKoff, if you would please. She's coming to the podium. I just want to note for the record that Council President Trent Deckard is also in the room here today. Thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Mary Ellen DeKoff. I'm the Presiding Judge of the Board of Judges in Monroe County. Also, I had a conversation about this meeting with the prosecutor Erica Alphant, who was not able to be here, and the Chief Public Defender Michael Hunt, who was also not being able to be because of their schedules, and so I have their permission to speak on their behalf on this issue as well. We understand that the cost of doing all of this is going to be very expensive, but hopefully, once we do this, it will be done and then be in place for the next however so many years. But when we talk about co-locating with the courts, the reality is that the courts are not just courtrooms, and they are not just judges. The courts are the entire court system, which includes the prosecutor and the public defender and probation and community corrections and some services that go with that. When you move part of that and you don't move all of that, it's going to create a tremendous problem logistically, scheduling-wise, moving cases, and in my opinion, actually doing justice. As the jail commander just mentioned, there are times when we have the schedule, we've given the jail the schedule in advance, but then we have somebody who comes and says, we have a bed for somebody at a treatment facility. If we can get them out today, then we can get them to that bed because the beds at treatment facilities come up at specific times, and if we have one, we want to get somebody in it. So then we call the jail and we say, can we have this person this afternoon? Can we have this person now so that we can get a hearing done and get that person where they need to go? If we're going to have to do that, and as the jail commander has just said, there's not a transport, or transport is difficult, or we can't get the people there that we need to get there, then we're not going to be able to get that done. We are dealing with human beings and human lives, and we realize that, and as such, we do the best we can with scheduling all nine of these courts so that we can work on other people's schedules as well. The world does not revolve around us, and we know that. However, we also know that there are decisions we make that affect a lot of other people. Monroe County judicial system has always been committed to the idea that we do not incarcerate people if we do not have to. There are times when we have to, and when we do that, a new jail is going to give us the ability to do that in a more humane way, with more options available, with more, the ability to be able to have people in that jail and begin to do certain things that we cannot do now, treatment-wise, assessment-wise, whatever that may be. But again, you're talking about a system, so when we get somebody out of that jail, if they're on pre-trial release or if they're on probation, we have services available to them, we work with service providers so that we can also make that happen. But you're talking a system. If you only locate part of us, even if it would just be the jail and the courts, now we're waiting on lawyers to get there, we're waiting on lawyers to communicate with each other, we're trying to work on that communication. This only happens if people can communicate. We communicate with the jail, we communicate with the lawyers, we communicate with service providers, probation, we send people there, we say, here, this is where you need to go, this is what's going to be happening, so that we can help people get where they need to be. So even if you only leave part of us, the public defenders and the prosecutors in one place, and the courts and the jail in another place, that's not going to work and it's not going to be efficient. You're going to lessen communication, you're going to lessen the ability for people to get to a hearing. If I find out there's a bed and I need a hearing, then I can set a hearing, those people are nearby, they're where we can communicate and get that done. The systems that I know of that are co-located altogether work well. The systems that do not do that do not work so well. Case in point is Marion County is still in the process of getting those co-located. They're having issues. You're going to have issues when you are trying to get moving parts together in one place. The, Corey and the jail commander have done a very good job of talking about the security risks, the transportation costs, the costs of all that. We heartily agree with that. The security issue is one of the main concerns for everybody in this system and those people coming into the system. But second of all, it's the transportation time, the transportation costs, the ability to get people where they're supposed to be when they're supposed to be there. And I would like to stand here and tell you that the people that we ask to be in court are always in court where they're supposed to be when they're supposed to be there. If you complicate that, that's going to get more complicated, or we say, you need to go now down the street to community corrections or probation. We have difficulty with that sometimes now. So if we, if once we're co-located, we can take care of all that. We are not unmindful of what this is, the cost that this is going to be. We are fully aware of that, and we do our best, have always done our best, to be aware of the cost of the county and be aware of what we do has an impact on what we do. But this decision is going to have a huge impact on what we do in our branch of government and what we do on a daily basis. It is going to be significant, and we know that while it's transitioning, we're going to have to work with that and do some things, but ultimately, if the goal is to end up in the same place with all of us there and all of us being able to operate and communicate together, that will be much better for the system and for every person in this county. And I cannot say that enough. I have been in this county for a long time, and I understand all of the limitations and all of the concerns, but this is necessary for us being able to do our jobs well and that system to run well and which will benefit everybody in this community. So that's our position, and I appreciate your being willing to listen to us.
Thank you so much. Did you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, actually, I do. When we had that original study done as to exactly what the situation was with the jail and where problems were coming from and all, a number of things were identified as feeding into it, and one of the things that was suggested is that court processes could be speeded up a bit, which would ease some of the overcrowding in the jail. It sounds to me like a lack of co-location would have the opposite effect.
Would have the complete opposite effect. It would slow down things considerably because you're talking about now the transporting of individuals, you're also, now you're talking about, even when you're not talking about that, if you're talking about the individuals that come into the system, you're talking about nine different courts, four of those are criminal, one of those is juvenile, the rest are civil, and the, all, you're talking about getting people there, having them, getting them to services, getting them to the things that they need, it will slow it down considerably. And as I said, when we have the opportunity to be able to do those things that are not scheduled, to try to get people out of the jail, that's going to slow that down considerably. Case in point, this week, and it's only Wednesday, when I've been doing court, on Monday, I was doing pre-trials, I didn't have changes of plea set, I had an individual, there was an agreement reached, he would get out of jail today if I could get the change of plea done. I got it into my schedule, we got it done that morning so he could be released. I had another individual that also had a plea agreement, we had to assure that we could get one question answered, I said it the next day, we got that done because I have all of those people there, I have all of the ability to communicate with that, and then I have the jail that I don't have to worry about scheduling now or transporting now, or we only, so it will slow it down considerably despite our best efforts because I am not in any way here to say that if it doesn't happen, we're going to do something on our end to make it slower, but it is going to slow it down considerably because of that scheduling primarily, and then trying to get people where they need to be, including lawyers and other people and family members and service providers who sometimes come because they'll be in the courtroom to see what's going to happen, to either provide insight or to be able to say, well, we can do this for them, you know, once we know what's happening here.
Great question. Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Gibbons?
I just want to say thank you to Judge DeKoff, that I really appreciate all your experience, your insights into things. I think it's important that we hear it, but also that the, excuse me, the general community hears that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. And just to get it on the record, to be clear, you support a statutorily allowable amount of .2 percent and to bond for $200 million?
I'm not sure that ethically I can respond to that or not, so.
You support a co-located facility?
Yes, I do. I support a co-located facility. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Great. All right. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues at this point?
I fully support the co-location, and I fully support the statutorily, moving to the statutorily allowed jail tax. I think we've heard a lot of things from the community, and I want to say, this is not a Field of Dreams situation. It's not a build it, if we build it, they will fill it. That's not what's going on here. We're trying to look at things that make this a constitutional facility, we're trying to plan for flexibility within the jail as recent exercise has pointed out to us. We're planning for, trying to plan for better programming space to make a difference in people's lives, and planning for the future as well as we can. We don't know what's going to happen 25 years from now, but we're trying to ensure that we have a facility that can accommodate that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I will just say that I really appreciate being able to lean on experts, people who work in the jail every day, people who work in the courts every day, and relying on these experts to help us move forward in a way that is best for our community in the long run, and absolutely having the ability to provide programming and treatment and the care and rehabilitation is the focus, not trying to keep a worn facility going. And, you know, if we do not fully co-locate, we don't really have a viable building downtown. The justice, the Charlotte Zitlow Justice Center is in poor shape. It's in poor shape. And one of the things we have talked about is when you force a location to be at a certain place and you limit the budget and you try to do it with financial efficiency, you end up with the building we have now, which is causing so many problems for our staff, for those who are incarcerated. It is not a good facility, and so we need to do better. We can do a lot better. And yeah, this isn't about gold taps in the bathrooms, this is about making sure that we do provide constitutional care and to do so as quickly as possible. So we do ask our council colleagues to lean on the experts we've leaned on and to support the statutorily allowable tax at .2 percent. So if there's anything else, anything else? Anyone else have anything to add for us today? Great. But we do thank you all for your constant input, your consideration, your expertise, and for your willingness to come today to share this information with the public and with the council. So thank you, thank you all so much for being here. Appreciate it. All right. We're adjourned.